Good evening and welcome to the 26th meeting of the Planning Board for fiscal year 2018. I'm Cheryl Taggias and I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'll ask the, excuse me, my co-members to introduce themselves now.
Denny Swinson, member.
April Lammerow, member.
Brian Fers, member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Laura Messer, Assistant Town Planner.
Okay, thank you for coming. We are really pleased to see such a great turnout. We weren't, we normally have our meetings in the basement of Town Hall, so we have a new venue here. One thing I will announce about the venue is that it is being recorded, but it's not live tonight. So if people are interested, it will be available through their programming and it will be available on the website. Let a couple more people come in. Normally, the Planning Board has two opportunities for, in our regularly scheduled meetings, which is, tonight is one of our regularly scheduled meetings with a number of things on the agenda. Normally, we have two opportunities for the public to provide input. The first is at Citizens Speak and the second is when we have a public hearing. We don't actually have public hearings tonight, even though we tried to do a lot of outreach to invite people to provide input. It's not technically a public hearing. So what I, normally, we would only have then opportunity at Citizens Speak. But what we'd like to do tonight is we're going to have two presentations on zoning initiatives. The first is going to be led by April Lammerow and the second I will lead. And we will request that if you have comments or questions regarding those two initiatives, to wait until after those presentations. So at this time, if there's anybody here who would like to address us at Citizens Speak on another topic other than those two, you're welcome to come forward. I see-
Is now the time to come forward?
If it's, if, unless you're here to come forward about the two zoning initiatives that are on the agenda.
No, those are not on my mind.
Okay, yes, then please come forward. We're going to ask you if you could come and have a microphone so that on the recording, we'll hear your question or comment. And then if you could, Bill, thank you. If you could provide your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
My name is Mary McMahon and I live on Quarry Lane in Milton. And I thought this was a Town Shea Tree event, committee meeting. And I came to request Carolina Silver Blue tree on my street and it's my property and my neighbors. And I realized it would be a fall planting if that were possible. And I would be willing to make a donation towards that tree.
Okay, so we, I'm sure that our Planning Department will be happy to transfer or translate that information or give that information to the DPW, right?
DPW Director tomorrow.
It's just for the video. There is not. Can you hear me when I'm speaking? No? Could be louder yet, okay. Okay, all right, well, I could also move to the middle. If that's helpful. All right. This is one of our challenges with our venue. Okay. All right, how about now? Can you hear me? Okay, great. So without further ado, I'm going to have April Lammerow lead this discussion. She has slides. Can people in the back see this screen? Not really. Okay. Is it, is it because of the height of it based on where you're seated? Okay. So would it be possible for those who are, really want to see the slides to kind of come to the side and stand for a short bit? Okay.
Maybe lower the lights?
Yeah, maybe lower the lights.
Bill, can we lower the lights? You know?
Okay, I am April Lammerow. I'm a member of the Planning Board. This happens to be my neighborhood. I live on Brook Road down towards Kelly Field. Thank you all so much for coming out tonight. I'm thrilled to see such a large audience to talk about zoning. I do apologize for the accommodations. We wanted to have this meeting in the neighborhood and this was the best place for it because of its proximity to the corner that we're talking about. So please bear with us on some of these logistic issues. So what we're here to talk about tonight is what I am calling the Brook Road Overlay District Zoning Proposal. And before we even move on to the first slide, I just want to let you know, this isn't, there's no zoning written for this proposal. This is a community meeting in the neighborhood intentionally to get feedback. So if you see something on here you don't like, don't be shy. Feel free to speak up. Nobody's feelings will be hurt. This is part of the planning process. So if we could go to the first slide, Lauren? So why are we here? The impetus for this meeting is really this property. It's 59 Thatcher Street, which you're probably very familiar with. It's right on the corner of Brook Road. This is the former Knights of Columbus site, which has been defunct for quite some time. And this is a single-family home. The single-family home was constructed in 1880, so there's some historic value to it, even though it looks pretty awful at the moment. So a lot of people in my neighborhood, my friends, myself and others that I know, have approached me about this and said, "What is going on here and why can't we do better?" The second reason why we're here, the next slide, to a much lesser degree, but this has certainly come up since I've been on the Planning Board, is this corner, the Milton Food Mart corner and SNE Auto. I should reveal that I am a very loyal customer of SNE Auto. I think they do an excellent job. I have spoken with the owner of these two properties and they have no intention of kicking out their tenants. So I want to throw that right out there. There's five-year leases remaining on both of these properties. Hopefully, they'll continue doing what they do for five more years. So this is not a effort to throw the food mart out of town or anybody else. It's simply a planning exercise. If we can move to the next slide. So when people talk about this corner, especially the Knights of Columbus building, and say, "What the heck is going on here? How can the town allow this to happen?" I think it's important for people to realize, we cannot, as a town, require anybody to redevelop their parcel. What we can do is we can set the conditions to make it attractive for somebody to want to do so. So that's what I'm hoping that we can talk about tonight. Are there zoning enhancements that we can make that would really encourage revitalization of the corner? So what is the existing zoning? The existing zoning today is residency zoning. That allows for single-family residential only on 7,500-square-foot minimum lots with a variety, with 75 square feet of frontage and a variety of setbacks on all sides of the building. So why hasn't the zoning encouraged people to develop what is clearly a not-so-attractive site at 59 Thatcher? And really, the residency zoning is just not an attractive option for that particular site. And I believe, this is coming from me only, but I believe that the cost to develop that site as two single families, which is all that could fit there, would either exceed or be equal to whatever revenue you would generate. So it's just not an attractive development option for a private entity. The owner, the current owner of the property has, had attempted in 2013 to get a variance, to put six condos in the Knights of Columbus building, which was rejected. And, you know, what other zoning tools do we have? Well, we could do a planned unit development, which is something that if you're on Town Meeting, you've heard quite a bit about. That's our preferred tool in town, at least for the last several years. This site is too small to allow for that. So even if there was a project, which we don't have a project before us today, but if there was, we couldn't do a PUD on this site because it's too small to meet the legal requirements to use that option, which is why I've proposed an overlay. So the next slide. So this is what I would be looking at for an overlay district. And I'm talking about me because, not because I'm trying to take credit, but just because my colleagues have not seen this presentation. And I don't want to blame them for something they might think is a bad idea. So this here is the boundary of what I would propose. Want to go to the next slide. It is a seven-parcel district. There's a current mix of uses of commercial, which are SNE Auto and the food mart. There is single-family residential at 3 Laurel. And this home, which is also on the same property as the Knights of Columbus. There's four condos in 148 Blue Hill Parkway and these are two, two-family buildings. None of those lots conform with the residency zoning, none of them. So they, most of them violate the minimum frontage requirements. All of them are too small for the 7,500-square-feet minimum lot size, with the exception of this one property. Oh, I'm sorry, every time I tap it, it's moving forward, sorry. So that, so it's, it's, from a planning perspective, the zoning doesn't meet with reality, which makes it a nice place to look at maybe making change. Okay, have the next slide. So I'm a consultant in my real life, which means I always need a three-point plan. So please pardon, but I've proposed a three-point plan for rezoning the corner. And I should explain, what I'm proposing is an overlay district. So it's not changing the underlying zoning. So someone who owns these properties could exercise their rights under this residency zoning district for single-family. Or if an overlay passes, they have that option as well. So it's an either/or. It's not, this wouldn't require any change necessarily. So the first proposal is to rezone the corner and part of the overlay would allow six condo units in this building, the Knights of Columbus building. Why six? Frankly, it's just because that's what had been proposed before. It seems reasonable to me, but I'm looking for feedback from you and I think the board is as well. The existing commercial building is probably 5,200 square feet. I put 55 here, but I believe that's an error. It's a 16,500-square-foot lot. There is potential here to change the access point, which I think is somewhat problematic, off the corner of Brook Road and Blue Hill Parkway, which seems to be always a little bit of a cat and mouse. If you're parking in front of the food mart, you've seen that. But we could potentially require some sort of access from Laurel Street. The, or Laurel Road, excuse me. I think that access would be a major consideration for this. We could also provide some sort of incentive bonus to rehab this single family and potentially make it an affordable housing unit for the future. So the second proposed piece of this is to allow, these are two existing commercial buildings, but they don't conform with our residency district zoning. So they're non-conforming. Again, just to clarify, the owners have no intention of developing these today. They have leases with these businesses and there is no, no one, I don't think, on this board that wants to shut anybody down. So in case you're concerned about that, that's not the intention. But it's looking forward. If we're doing something for the Knights of Columbus, perhaps we should think about what might happen here in the future. So what I propose, both of these lots combined are 11,000 square feet. And it seems to me that if we were to propose some redevelopment of these structures, that those two lots would need to be joined to make for a reasonable size. It also seems to me that this might be a nice place for a mixed-use building with first-floor retail to maintain that residential amenity, the commercial amenity in a residential neighborhood, and upper-story apartments. This site is one-half mile from the Matapan Tea Station. It's in a very good location that qualifies it as transit-oriented development. And I think it could make for a very attractive rental housing opportunity someday, should somebody wish to develop it. So this would be potentially a mixed-use opportunity that would require the merging of these two sites with first-floor retail and upper-story rental housing. And then the third piece is these three buildings. The simple recommendation here is no change. These are all historic structures built in 1900 or before. They're currently, people residing in them. It seems pretty happy to me. And I think the best thing that we could do for them is create some conformity with our existing zoning so they're no longer considered illegal structures. And what I would propose for these three parcels is just grandfathering them into this zoning so that their existing multifamily uses are considered legal uses. So the goals of the overlay are twofold. The short-term goal, as I already covered, is to promote the timely redevelopment of the blighted parcel at 59 Thatcher Street, which again is in a primarily residential area and seems most appropriate to be reused for residential purposes. And the longer-term goal would be to support future mixed-use redevelopment of 131 and 133 Brook Road, the food mart and SNE Auto sites, with a continued neighborhood-scale commercial use. And by neighborhood scale, I mean a small neighborhood-sized amenity. Nothing, clearly nothing big box or large. Something similar in size and scale to what's there now. So if the neighborhood and the people in this room and elsewhere in town feel that this is a good idea, there's a lot more work to be done. I think some of the things that we would need to consider are density. Does six units make sense at the Knights of Columbus? Should it be fewer? Does mixed use on the two commercial sites make sense? How, how large should that be? Should it be one story of housing or two above? Or does that even make sense to you at all? Is, is what I've proposed here consistent with the neighborhood? The fabric of the neighborhood and frankly, the beauty of the Blue Hills Parkway and the natural amenities there? Site access, which I think is a major challenge today. Can that be improved, which I think could certainly be improved? What are the traffic impacts? And then parking. Next slide. So the, the next steps here would be, first of all, get your feedback, which is what we hope to do tonight. If the feedback is positive, refine the proposal based on what we hear and draft a zoning article if people think this is a good idea. If we hear that this is a bad idea and there's no support for it, I think we'll just table it and move on with our lives. But if we decide to go forward with this, we would submit a zoning article to the Selectman, perhaps in August, for consideration at the October Town Meeting. It could also happen next spring or any other time, so there's no particular rush. But this could be the schedule. And then the last thing would be the landowners could choose whether or not to exercise these new zoning rights. And nothing would require them to do so. If they chose to do it, great. And if they didn't want to, they don't have to do that. So thank you for coming. I think now we want to open it up for people to weigh in.
I just wanted to give member, our members of the board an opportunity, April, to make a short comment if they'd like regarding this initiative. So we see one member just coming in now after traveling. He made it. Rich Beeler is our fifth member. Denny or Brian, would either of you like to make any comment regarding what April has presented here?
I'm, I'm most interested to hear from the public. But so I, I'd like to save my comments until I hear further. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Hi, Denny Swinson. I, I'm just most interested to hear from the public. So I'm going to save my comments or thoughts after. I'm just most interested to hear from all of you. Thank you.
So I'm just going to make one other comment is that oftentimes after we receive comments in our meetings, we have a discussion amongst the board. We don't believe we'll have time to do that tonight. And we, so we will take the comments, but unless it's a very simple, straightforward answer, we won't be answering each question tonight because we're going to run short on time. We have a time limitation of how long we can be in this space. And it's 10 o'clock at the very latest. We know how long these things take and they can take a long time. This will not be the only meeting and there will be a lot of outreach. If you have interest in being on an email list to learn about this as it moves forward or if it moves forward, please sign up for an email list with Lauren before you leave. Okay? With that, we're going to have to have people come forward, I'm afraid, so that your voices-
Hi. Deborah Felton. I'm a Town Meeting member from Precinct 2. So we, there was a master plan committee. Many of us were here that day. We met at Tucker School and we spent a lot of time focusing on that corner. So I would like to hear what came out of that master plan because we've already discussed this corner, what, three years ago now? So discussions, this isn't, I just want people to know, this isn't the first discussion we've had about this. Then the KFC building, and there may be somebody here who can fill us in on this. It was bought by a developer. It was going to be developed. And as probably a lot of people know, we need affordable housing in the town of Milton. And I think we wanted, we want, I think we, I think the Selectman and their negotiation, and I know Katie Conlin's here, maybe she remembers, that the town wanted, I think, two affordable housing units. And the developer said financially, they couldn't do that. And so they've just walked away from the development. That's my understanding. So there is some history already in the corner.
I'll just make a comment, one short comment regarding the, the master plan. It was referenced in the master plan that there are a number of places in town that have these, what we call, pre-existing non-conforming uses, which means that any change to these properties, if they're going to continue with a new business, has to go to the Board of Appeal in order to get a variance or a special permit to do that. And oftentimes, that can be considered burdensome. And for some people, it, it might be seen as advantageous. But having non-conforming properties could also affect their value. So having an overlay which tries to address these properties that are non-conforming could be beneficial and eventually help incentivize improvements. Okay, anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Keesh Leicher, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Number 4. Can everybody hear me? Awesome. I've been in Milton now for six years, raising my family here. My kid, my kids, one of my sons still goes to Tucker. My daughter goes to Pierce. I've always looked at that corner over there and I see that building and it's grotesque. It's horrific and it does not raise my property values as someone that lives on the parkway. If we can get something done sooner rather than later, not have Hendry's 2.0, full support behind this. Let's clean it up. Let's make Milton look more beautiful and let's do whatever we can to get this done. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Dana Grant. I live, my back door faces this building and it's disgusting. It's dangerous. My son kicked a soccer ball over there. My neighbor was nice enough to get it. There's beer bottles, wine bottles. I've called the police for people who are into it. It's just, it's awful. And it's disgusting to look at. So you gotta do something because it's not on my property value either.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Joan Giancarschi, Precinct 1. I, formerly, I lived directly across the street from the corner. Now I live directly across the street from the Tucker School. I have two questions. One, for the Knights of Columbus and the home, are the owners willing to sell? And with regard to the food mart and the garage, when I first moved here, those buildings were well taken care of. Is the present owner willing to- Upgrade those facilities during the next five years in which they have tenants?
So the question about is the owner willing to sell? The owner of the Knights of Columbus property, 59 Thatcher, I've called. And he is very, he doesn't have his property for sale. He's very interested in pursuing a project similar to the project he tried to get permitted in 2013, which was six condos and rehabbing that single-family in front as an affordable unit. I don't know, Deborah, about the second affordable unit. All I know is the variance was denied and he told me that's why he hasn't pursued it. And the variance process is very unpredictable and pretty expensive to go through, so he hasn't been willing to do that again. And he expressed to me that he's been waiting for the town to do something and he would then respond to it. I can't guarantee that if a zoning proposal were to go forward, that he would, that he would. But he has expressed to me, and I'm sure if anybody else wants to call him, he'll say the same to you, that he, he's making no money sitting on this, this property. So it would be in his financial best interest to move forward with something. As for the food mart, I, I have no idea. The folks that own that have been very lovely, I've spoken with them also. And they have just assured me that they have no immediate plans and their interest is in taking care of their tenants, which I think is, is right. So I've heard nothing about any plans to do anything to either of those properties.
I've been asked to please remind people to provide their name and address when they provide a comment. You'll be next after this.
Hi, my name's Cynthia Clark. My mother owns the home at 167 Brook Road and has for 50 years. And a lot of people in the neighborhood have been there for a long time. And I don't see people from the budding neighborhood. We weren't informed of the meeting. So I, I heard about it from somebody. So I think maybe some of those people aren't here because they didn't hear about it either. But we were present in 2013 when the developer presented his plans to the Appeals Board. And it was denied because it's so hard to get for several reasons. One, because it was six units, three bedrooms each, so you figure 18 cars. The cars were going to be in the front, which didn't sound attractive. There was not much talk about green space. And the entry and exit there on the corner is terrible. It's dangerous, just as it is now, never mind adding all that traffic. And the head of the Appeals Board had gone around that time to check out the area so that he would be informed during that hearing and said he couldn't see how that would work. So I don't see anything different this time. I think that the owner has been waiting it out and hoping that the town would be desperate enough that it would agree to whatever he wanted to do. But I'm not sure that, I, I know that that doesn't make sense for people who live in the area. It is dangerous. And there's a lot of traffic cutting through on Thatcher Street, which didn't used to be, but it is now. So I'm not sure how it would work. And it's very dense. He obviously needs to get appeals, either rezoning. And there's no proposal in place right now for rezoning. So you're leaving it open to whatever may come. And couldn't we, the owner has no intention of selling. As far as we know, the long-term owner of the Milton Food Market and the gas station. So sometime in the future, somebody can buy this and do, we don't know what to it. So the only short-term gain seems to be for the developer of Knights of Columbus without making any changes to make the neighbors feel better about what it is that he wants to do.
So I just want to clarify, this is, the answer, the question is, what, what does the neighbors want to do? I mean, do you think that this property is in good shape? Are you happy with it? And if not, then let's talk about what the best next step is. The Knights of Columbus, yes, the KFC. We can, we can talk about that. I think we have to talk about it. But I just want to clarify, there's no, I've reached out to the owner out of sheer frustration for the status quo. There is no project that he has designed and brought to the town. There is nothing that we're responding to. I asked him what his intention was in 2013 so we would have a jumping-off point to know, you know, what, what was considered. But I just want everyone here to know, this is not pre-baited. This is, what does the neighborhood think? All of those things, density, access, parking, all have to be worked out. And it's incumbent upon us to drive that. So we can change the zoning if we choose to do it, however we want to. And if he responds, which I hope that he does, that's great. But if he doesn't, then he can sell it to somebody else who wants to or we can wait it out some more. But I think it's in, we're in the driver's seat.
Do you mind, I'm going to have people who, everyone have an opportunity first and then if somebody wants to come back for a second comment, please do so at that time.
Hello, everybody. I've been here 31 years on Laurel Road, 12 Laurel Road. My name's George Richmond. My daughter Laura graduated from this school. I remember 2013 and I remember the Knights of Columbus. And being a knight myself from a different council, I have to say they were very irresponsible over the years there in their particular handling of the maintenance of the house that they owned on the corner that Paul from the dump used to live in, or John, Paul lived there, yeah, and maintaining the building. And then they saw an opportunity to dump it and make some money and move to St. Elizabeth's Church, which is fine, but they weren't responsible owners either, the Knights of Columbus. God bless them. All right? And they're not the only people in the church that haven't been responsible and upset. But the fact is, six units there is way too dense for condos. That house, I like the idea of rehabbing the house and making it affordable, you know? Who owns the food mart and who owns the garage when, I believe it is April, am I correct?
Yep.
Spoke. I wasn't clear, there was a mention of combining the lots perhaps at some future point and developing that particular now enlarged piece of property to meet the zoning that's appropriate. But you didn't mention the garage. You mentioned a food or retail's bottom and then one or two stories. Definitely not two stories, more than two. I mean, a first floor and a second floor, but there's no need for three-story building there. That's out of character with the community. As far as traffic, Laurel Road is like a highway in the morning. We don't have the one-way sign, don't come down here. We don't have the speed bump. We never see the police there with the, you know, speed control, you know? And people just fly down there, you know? It's a cutthroat. All right? And I've been here 31 years and never seen a police officer there with a gun, you know? Not a pistol, but radar. So in 31 years, I've shoveled out the fire hydrant every storm except one. And in 31 years, I've cut the shade strip and kept it green for 31 years. As far as I'm concerned, thank you. As far as I'm concerned, so far the town really hasn't paid a lot of attention to this area of the community. And when you look at how much taxes we all pay because we're so densely packed, but our taxes are what, six Gs, seven Gs? You add it all up, we, we meet the criteria for maybe looking like Indian Springs or Brook Road, you know? Maybe we should get a little more, you know, attention down here. That's what I say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Traktamerg. I live on Columbia Park, the little
Can't hear you.
I'm a little nervous. I'm Gail Traktamerg. I live on Columbia Park. It's the little street that's right across from the, the road, is a dead end. And I just had a question about street frontage. The, it was never clear to me who owns that parcel or the piece of parcel that the store uses as a parking lot. Is that a part of the street frontage for the, for the Knights of Columbus?
Yes.
And the other question is related to that. So there was questions about what to do with the property. I missed the first part of the presentation and I think that, that whole, that whole array, I think something should be done with it. I've been dreaming about what should be done with it. I have a lot of ideas, so I can talk to you after about what could be done with it. But it's really a matter of street frontage and that intersection and you really have to clean the whole thing up at the same time.
Beth Neville, Five Cliff Road. This has been very informative. We came to try to find out what's going on and I must say, I'm very pleased that we gave up going to the ballet tonight. Someone else is taking our tickets. There's a little
Area that's in front of that, a round brick. I've got to tell you, I don't know who owns that, but a simple improvement would be to raise that thing and put it in a really nice little park. Does that town land?
Yes.
Well, why don't we start there?
Anyone else?
On a wall screen, I live at 181 Brook Road. Been there for, wow, 19 years, I guess, maybe 20. Anyway, I'm opposed to any development that increases the density in that spot. The density there, I think, is maximum already. There's, there are problems with people parking in order to go to the store. There is a lot of traffic. I walk back and forth there trying to get across the street. The people coming around the corner to go on Thatcher Road don't stop. And if there's six condos going in there, you know, everybody's got at least one or two cars, where are all those cars going to go? There isn't any place for them. And that's my big concern. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Goddard, also known as Ife Oshun. I live at 27 Revere, which is in the Pine Tree Brook area, so a little further down. But as a mom, I'm really concerned about that area. I know some of our boys like to travel around after school and hang out because they really don't have anywhere else to go and places like that seem to attract them. So I would be very happy for something to happen, but I'm not sure if making it denser is the solution. So my question is, we talked about the fact that the home may or may not have some historical value. I'm wondering if A, does it have any value? And B, if it does have any value, would that positively impact any efforts to develop or negatively impact any efforts to develop?
So that's a good question. I don't know. Because I don't have a proposal to, you know, I think that that's an existing structure which the current owner has told me is in very good condition despite the way that it looks. So, I mean, it depends on who owns the site and what they want to do there. I can't say whether it's a net benefit or a net positive. I think that if there were to be some sort of development that was residential, I would think there would be a benefit to preserving that home on then a residential parcel, but it's hard to tell. I mean, I don't want to make commitments that someone in the future may not live up to. And on the topic of density, I just want to be clear because I'm not sure I was, the density that I was proposing, I guess it's not density necessarily, but the structure size I was proposing would be no larger than what exists today. So then you say, well, how many apartments or condos could fit in there? I don't know. Depends on how big they are and, you know, we can talk about that. But I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't proposing some massive structure. This is already a very, very large structure for the site, the size of the site.
Anyone else? One second. Okay, if there's no one else, then we'll have, yeah, in the back, please come forward. Reminder, name and address, please.
Okay. I'm Lauren Barone. I don't know, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I live at 12 Darby Road, which is right around the corner. We've been here since 2000. My daughters took dance lessons at the Knights of Columbus and now it is the eyesore that it is. So I guess I'm full of questions. So first of all, what I'd like to know, does this owner live in Milton?
No.
He does not. Okay. What, I'm still unclear on what his intentions are. Like what does he want to develop this property as?
He wanted, in the past, to develop it as six condos.
So not commercial property, he wants his six condos?
Correct. The proposal in 2013, which got rejected
Right.
Was six condos in this building.
Okay.
Today, he doesn't have a proposal. He has expressed the continued desire to pursue a project like that.
Yeah.
But he's waiting for the town to tell him
What to do?
What could be possible.
So the house, that, the town is not dictating that that house must stay just because it's historic, is that correct?
I'm just going to speak, the, any property before
Forty-seven?
I'm sorry, what year was it? 1919? Would be subject to the demolition delay. So what that means is they file, you file for a permit at the building department and the building official would deny the permit initially until it went to the Historical Commission and they would have an opportunity to put a demolition delay on it. This was, the timeframe for that was changed recently at town meeting to make it much longer and the, and that was something that the Historical Commission had sought because a longer time would give opportunity for a developer to seek alternate ways to redevelop the site. So in a sense, encouraging redevelopment of a historic property.
Right.
But there are no other tools in terms of whether one, if there, we don't have historic districts per se.
Right.
You know, whether, that's a, that is something that the town could consider and the Historical Commission is discussing. And a historical district could be one parcel. But it really is something that takes a lot of study and there are state requirements for it. So at the moment, it's just the demolition delay that would come into play for a property that had a structure
So, does the owner care if that structure is demolished?
Well, he would have to do it.
He would have to do it?
Because he owns it.
Okay. So Women's Club, I can't imagine that the Historical Society in Milton really cares about that particular structure. I could be wrong, but, you know, they plowed down the Who's At Club if Peter Kelly didn't just buy it and whatnot. So it's an eyesore. And so I'm also curious if anybody has suggested to this fellow, Ned Corcoran, who, you know, has anybody, you know, to get things moving?
So Ned is a private attorney.
Yes.
He represented this gentleman
Okay.
For the variance.
Okay.
I do not know if they have an existing relationship. I do not believe that they do, but I don't know. And that would really be, I think, inappropriate for the town.
Right, okay. That's fine. So, and does he have any interest for a commercial venture in this property or is he stuck on condo units?
I do not know. I don't know if he's a commercial developer. I didn't ask him.
Okay.
I, the only thing I asked him is
I mean, it's just clarifying for all of us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What, what does this guy, what does he want?
He wants to do six condos.
He wants six condos? Okay. But, I mean, if they were commercially units, if it was office space, is he conducive to office space?
I don't know.
Okay, so.
I didn't ask any of those questions.
Yeah, okay.
Only because, and I don't, I'm happy that you're asking them. I just said, what did you want to do here?
Right.
So I didn't go down a path of what about this and what about that?
Right.
I just kind of asked and then I thought the next option was, the next thing to do was to share the information with the neighborhood
Right.
And figure out what they thought. So if the neighborhood, if you're proposing office, that's something we should talk about.
Right.
But I think any option is on the table.
Okay.
It's just a proposal based on what had been proposed earlier and we can decide we don't like it and start from scratch.
Okay.
Lots of options.
So if this quorum of people here just to suggest, you know, what they would like, you know, if they prefer office space rather than condos, you know, is that our purpose here? Right. But something must be done with this space and he's not going to, somebody's going to do something with the space, so.
Why not?
Right, right. Well, he might decide to do something, so anyway, I'm just
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I'm mindful of the time.
Okay.
I'm just going to ask if we can move on. Sorry, we have one, we have some more who would like to speak. I'm sorry. Can I have a show of hands of how many people would still like to speak? Okay.
Hi, I'm Deborah Milbauer. I live at 16 Winthrop Street. Can you guys hear me? I just have a quick question. If you could re-explain, you're using a lot of technical language and I'm not sure everyone here knows what an overlay is or a zoning or, so if you could just quickly describe. And so what I want to clarify what's on the table is, when you say it's a residential district, or you could explain what that is, and a commercial district and then what an overlay is, and what exactly is you're asking us to decide it? Because it sounds like we're not deciding offices, building, we're just deciding about this overlay and then you put in sort of conditions for the overlay. So can you just explain in English for everybody and translate the language so everyone can understand?
I will try, I will try. Thank you, Deborah. I need that reminder. I'm sorry, I'm a very big policy nerd and sometimes I forget that's not who I'm talking to. So can we go back maybe to, to the residency? So what is zoning? Zoning is basically the laws that the town has adopted that guide what you can do with certain properties. The zoning that exists on this, these properties, all of these properties on this corner today allow for single-family residential development. An overlay district is a layer of new law that goes on top of these parcels that you define that gives you another option. So you can either use single-family residential to build a single-family house or two houses on the Knights of Columbus lot, or you could use the other option which would be determined by whatever overlay is adopted. You don't have to have an overlay, it's just a tool. And in a situation like this, where you're looking to encourage revitalization of certain properties, but not the whole town or not the whole neighborhood, just very specific locations. Did that help?
Can I just add to that, April? I just want to add that the zoning bylaw was adopted in Milton in 1938 and at that time, a lot of Milton was already built out. So it took an overlay over many areas and put single-family, the single-family, we have A, B, and C primarily, we have some multifamily which are the, primarily the elderly. But the A, B, and C, some of that went on to existing commercial properties and it went on to existing two-family properties. And they became, what I said earlier, pre-existing non-conforming. So we have methods in the zoning to address changes on those properties, but it's not something when somebody comes from out of town and they buy a piece of property, it's not a straightforward notion that they say, okay, here's what I can do on this property when they buy it. Because they say, they, what they're going to be told is, you're going to have to go to the Board of Appeal to see what they will approve for you to do with that property. So when you do an overlay over properties like this, it gives another opportunity for redevelopment that takes away some of that uncertainty because the town will already have said, this is what we'd like to see on this parcel, instead of somebody coming in and saying, this is what I want to put on that parcel.
Right. So, and then just to review quickly what the proposal is that we're responding to. Number one, should this be reused, this Knights of Columbus site, for residential uses? I have proposed, should this be six condos and perhaps saving this single-family or some other number of condos or apartments? Next. Should these two sites, which are currently non-conforming commercials, should we consider those in the future as mixed-use opportunities with an ongoing retail and perhaps one story of apartments, not two? And these, frankly, I just want to make these legal parcels for multifamily housing because they're not today. These are supposed to be single-family, they're currently four condos, two, two-family and another They're currently four condos, two, two family and another two family. Let's just make those conforming and grandfather them into the zoning so no one can question their existence in the future.
Okay, yes, please come forward. And you'll be next.
Hi, my name is Catherine Williams, and I live at 566 Elliot Street. Can everyone hear me? Little louder? Is that better? Okay, great. I am relatively new to Milton, but I'm so glad to see so many familiar faces from my neighborhood. I live close to the area around the corner at the end of Elliot Street, near the Matapan Square there. I have, I have young children, and they play in the neighborhood with children on Brook Road, on Columbia Park, on Briarfield, and that's their neighborhood. And it's a terrible sight to look at. There's broken glass, there's broken fences. It's not safe. I worry that my children will be, you know, playing in and around that. Many other people have mentioned the traffic issues. So I am, I appreciate the board taking up this issue and this piece of, of property. It's something I'm very, very interested in hearing a discussion more about and ideas from the community. I very much appreciate the forum that you've given the town to respond to this. While coming over here, my daughter, who I brought tonight, who now is, could be completely embarrassed. Her name is Ella. Is to have a small, not too big one, flower shop there. For the community. But in all seriousness, I support this conversation, and I appreciate sitting here and listening to people's ideas. I do have one question, and I missed the beginning of the presentation. The access to the Knights of Columbus, is there a, I couldn't tell from the map, is there another point, April, where access could be given? Where that could be closed off, and you could put another access point for cars? Does that question make sense?
Yeah. So can we go back to the Knights of Columbus? So the access point is currently right here, through that kind of ugly brick median that somebody mentioned earlier, and that I support. Let's put some trees in there. This is a private property owner. From what I understand, this gentleman is hoping to acquire this portion of the parcel, or the entire thing, perhaps, for an improved access. But I don't know the status of that in conversation. I mean, you certainly could require it in zoning. And then that would, you know, be dependent on private property owners to work out. But there's certainly opportunities for access on this side. This is the church, so this is not included in the... Okay. Thank you.
It's a good segue. I'm Catherine Johnson. I'm the pastor of the church. I live up on Clifton Road, but spend a lot of time right down here at the church. The idea I'd like to float is, I wonder if we could get a group of neighbors to meet with the developer, not in an adversarial role, but to ask for a meeting with him to explain our interests in terms of safety, what the property looks like, property values, et cetera, which I would hope that he would understand. I assume he lives somewhere. And ask him if there is a way that we can work together to... I don't know what his interests are. It appears that his interest is making money, but we don't know. I think it would be interesting to ask him what his interests are, and to ask him if there's any way that we can meet our needs and his needs. So I don't know where to go with that idea, but it, it might be one route to move things off where they are now, where they're not moving.
Thank you. Okay, so, and then you.
Joan Giancarski, 75 Oak Street. I would love to stay in this neighborhood when I downsized. And when I first heard this proposal, I thought, "Oh, perfect. I can continue to live in what we know is the best neighborhood in Milton." But I have a short, short-term question. I have heard the words disgusting, eyesore, beer bottles, other debris, how this being a gateway into Milton, just how unappealing it looks. In the short, short term, is there anything the planning board or the town can do to motivate the owners of all four parcels to clean up their property and have it look appealing? And have it look like the rest of the Parkway looks, and the rest of Milton looks, and not be the eyesore we all see on a daily basis?
So my understanding is, on the vacant building, the Board of Health has a role to play. And the prob, I think also likely, especially if the building were deemed unsafe, it would be the building department, that, on the short-term side. What the planning board can do is really more on the long-term side. Next, thank you. We'll have to get back to you with more information about that, okay?
Cynthia Clark, 167 Brook Road, is my mother's house again. And I, after I spoke, you asked, "Do I want that building developed?" And absolutely, yes, would love to see that building developed, obviously. It's an eyesore, as everyone has said. It seems like there could be some enforcement from the town, was something that I was thinking also. There's a ripped sign at that gas station. Those two, the store and the gas station, have been there for a very long time. And they looked nice when it was Mercer's Grocery Store. And whoever had the gas station, it was not an eyesore, and it's a matter of maintenance. So if the sign committee, which seems to have all kinds of really strict rules, could look at the sidewalk signs that they put out, and the ripped thing on the building, and tires sitting outside, and racks, old cars, there must be something that can be done from an enforcement point of view. And the building that you worried about children going into, the police should be able to do something. And the building inspector, if it's dangerous, again. So those things shouldn't be the reason that this developer... You know, I think that there's a history of developers waiting the town out to get what they want. And is that how it should be? It doesn't seem right. We very much want the neighborhood to be valued, look nice. You know, property values are a big deal. There's a very expensive house right across the street from this little spot that just sold for seven figures. So, I think those, and I wanted to make it clear, the developer, I don't think that we were adversarial when we met with the appeals board. We listened, and then we asked questions, and there was no flexibility from this. Six condos with three bedrooms each. That was it. Okay.
Sorry, wait, I have one more. Yep.
Annie Davis, 39 Avalon Road and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. What I would dream, I don't care about the developer. What I would dream would be, these would remain commercial and maybe with mixed use, so residential above. This space and this space also mixed use, with commercial and residential, so that we would have a little business district here, and perhaps green space and parking behind. Rather than, you know, tearing it down and basically just cleaning up what we've got, how about making it better? And for me, that would mean a mixed-use corner with residential and opportunities for shopping and amenities with parking and green space because our neighborhood does not have adequate green space.
Thank you. Okay, in light of time, we're going to have you be the last one to provide comment tonight. It won't be the last opportunity to provide comment.
Yes, and I wanted to thank the, not the last speaker, but thank you, the speak, the former speaker, the one that spoke previously, to remind everybody that the developer wants six three-bedroom condominiums in that building just because the building size will allow it. That's a lot of cars, a lot of people, a lot of students in the school system. Not that we don't love students. But what are we gonna get for taxes to support our school system from six three-bedroom condos with at least two cars? I mean, I can't imagine, you know... I know we're close to the MBTA, but we're also close to all the highways here. That's another big selling point on Milton, that, you know, there's easy access to highway systems. So as someone did point out earlier, obviously, the developer wants to make money. And of course, that's normal in business, but it doesn't have to put us in the hole, really. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I want to thank my colleague, April Lammerow, for preparing this and taking initiative. And I also want to make sure that everyone knows that our Assistant Town Planner, Lauren Massier, is, her email is on the town website, and you're welcome to send any other comments that you think of as you ponder what you heard tonight. And we will be posting April's presentation on the website. So if you know of people who were not here, who you think would be interested in it, they can go to the town website. We're also, as I mentioned earlier, collecting email addresses. But you can also, there was a glitch, we learned, on the town's notification, and the, where you can go and click when you want to get notification about certain things. For example, planning board meetings, or public hearings, or public meetings at the planning board sponsors. So you can now, we understand it's functioning, you can do that, and you'll get a notification when there's gonna be a meeting. So we are now gonna take a couple-minute break, and we're gonna switch our conversation to Milton Village. So we'll, if anyone is not here to continue that conversation, you're welcome to, to leave. Or stay. Hello, we're gonna get started again?
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, folks, we're gonna get started. I'm trying to use my best loud voice. I am getting a sore throat, so if I could, I have a throat lossing, so if I have a few more and some water, bear with me. So I have up on the screen here what I'd like to cover. It's a lot to cover, but I think it's important that we do it. There's a lot of background on this initiative. So I'm gonna go through the background, how we arrived at doing this initiative, what the process has been, and what the process will be going forward. Talk a little bit about the district. I think some people may be unfamiliar with where the district is, what its character is. It is a historic area. And then we're also gonna talk about its zoning. That gets into the nitty-gritty. If I am like April, and I, and you, I use terms that you don't understand, raise your hand, please. We're gonna talk about what the goals are of that, of the study, the overlay zoning, what our next steps as a planning board are, what the next steps of the Master Plan Implementation Committee are. I'm gonna ask for a short comment, if desired, from my board members and from staff, and then we'll move to public comment. We're going to be having further discussion of this, just like the Brook Road, in multiple meetings. So just wanna tie this to the master plan. So the planning board is required to adopt a master plan. We did so in this town before I was here in 1974. And it was updated for the first time since then in 2015, after a two-year process and $125,000 investment by the town. The planning board voted unanimously at that time to adopt that master plan. So the municipal body that's authorized to initiate zoning amendments is the planning board. So if we're going to do that, the planning board needs to hold public hearings. So this is the process part. Those, an amendment to the zoning, after those public hearings and after a lot of discussion at the planning board, is then sent to the selectmen for their consideration for inclusion in the warrant for town meeting. If they do so, then it goes to the warrant committee for their review and discussion. Then it will go to town meeting, where a two-thirds vote of the town meeting members is required for its adoption. Then it goes to the Attorney General, who has to approve it before it gets put into effect. So you can see it's a long process. We start somewhere. We, in the case of April, she started with having a blighted building. In the case of the overlay for Milton Village, it started from the master plan, which I'll get into. One of the things that, when I was on the warrant committee, and there was a one annual town meeting, and the warrant committee was trying to review budgets and zoning articles at the same time for the same town meeting, it became apparent that it would be beneficial to have a second town meeting that could address zoning. And that was identified to be in October. So there are logistical issues with having an October town meeting in terms of schedule, which we can get into a little bit. So as far as the master plan, I mentioned some of this. The Master Plan Implementation Committee was formed by a vote of town meeting to be constituted of five members. One member required to come from the planning board, so that's me. And it's been me since it was established. One member from the Board of Selectmen, and that's been Katie Conlin. And then three members of the public, who have backgrounds in either planning, architecture, economic development, landscape architecture, real estate, or other relevant fields. So we currently have Taber Keely, Dick Burke, and Liz Miller, who are on that committee. Our committee, that committee, has met monthly since its formation. We have a very open meeting. We invite the public to attend, and we take comment and solicit feedback at every meeting. The committee chair, who has been me, has provided reports to town meeting in 2017 annual town meeting and at the most recent 2018 town meeting. So the master plan, there are, so a lot of information in the master plan, a lot of good data. A lot of people here participated in it, as I did. And we know we want, a lot of people said, "Let's don't have that plan sit on the shelf." We want to see things acted on after we invested our time and energy and money of the town to put this vision together. So two of the things I want to highlight out of that master plan are, create mixed-use districts where our commercial districts are currently located. Could they be more vibrant by allowing living over the shop, living over the store, like it used to be in our, in times when people had less cars and were relying less on their cars? So that's something that's commonly being done because it helps support the businesses that are there, and it continues to bring vitality. The other thing is, increase the range of housing types. As we all know, Milton is primarily single-family. There are some limited multifamily. And as the master plan and the town's housing production plan have identified a problem or a shortfall, a problem in being elder, our older residents being able to downsize into something smaller with less maintenance, and our younger residents who are finding it hard to afford a place in Milton. So we could provide, by providing housing... So we could provide, by providing housing above commercial, that's smaller, it could be a starter place for somebody, or a downsized place for somebody. Pardon me one moment. So, one of the other things to highlight is, once we adopt the master plan, we want to make our zoning bylaws consistent with the vision that's set forth in that master plan. So this initiative is a result of wanting to move forward on those goals. So, the master plan, again, has a number of tools that are recommended, and that's this mixed-use overlay district. So what, April explained this a little bit already, it does not change the underlying zoning, but it gives an opportunity for property owners to do something, which the town itself has decided is beneficial for that area. So, a little bit of a zoning primer that was asked about, I think, a little bit earlier is, it's, zoning is the town's control over what is or is not allowed to occur on private property. The zoning shapes future districts and creates, and can create incentives for market-based redevelopment on properties that might be underperforming, or vacant, or what have you. But it does not require landowners to do anything, and it does not take rights away from landowners. And it does not, so it's not an eminent domain, or taking of any sort. So now the Milton Village. So, this area, the red line outlines, so the things in the middle, is the commercial district in Milton Village. And then there's a long tail that goes along Elliot Street, without really any property that fronts onto it. So this district was selected and recommended, the master plan implementation committee recommended, to the planning board and to the board of selectmen, to hire a consultant to assist us in this process. The consultant that was engaged is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and we started work with them the summer of last year. We met monthly with them, we had a community meeting, actually, before the community meeting, we had a joint meeting of the board of selectmen, the planning board, the master plan implementation committee, in October. We had a community meeting in December. The committee was interested in a lot of outreach, so the outreach included postings in the Milton Times, the Milton Scene, Milton Neighbors Facebook, Town Facebook, Town Website, and the planning department mailed information to property, properties within 1,000 feet of 88 Wharf. There, oh, before you go, there was, at the community meeting in December, the consultant led a process of, to solicit feedback. And so it was, there was a handout, and then there was also an online survey, and people were invited to provide their feedback in those, in that way. Again, so a lot of these slides are pulled from the presentations at the master plan implementation committee meetings, prepared, these were prepared by our consultant. So this outlined, the orange, the coordination with planning staff, and the deep blue, the meetings. We actually had many more meetings than he initially outlined, and he responded to comments between each meeting, so that the presentation that he came to the following month, he had tied it back to the feedback that he had received the prior month. So, this is the district in a more technical kind of map. Elliot Street, here, Adams Street, High Street, and Wharf Street, and then this is the Napanzit River, Canton Ave, Randolph Ave. This is a list of the parcels that are within the district, by their parcel ID, their address, the year they were built, who owns it, what the size of the parcel is, what the size of the building is. This is taken from the town's GIS and assessing data, what the, there's something called FAR that I'll get into, how many stories, what its current use is, and how many parking spaces, from the best that we could tell, are associated with each of those parcels. So, one of the things that we talked about with this district is that it's useful to understanding its character. So it's, it has a lot of small lots, because it was developed some time ago, 1700s in some cases, and probably even earlier. Historic buildings, some that have been carefully preserved and kept functional, and some that have been lost. There's, I think, a couple other characteristics, in terms of the lack of the ground floor continuity, so when we have a commercial district to be vital, it's nice to have first-floor uses that people can come in and out, in some cases, we have pockets of it, in other cases, we don't. But we do have strong walkability, we have access to the trolley, we have access to the Napanzit, and we have access to the bike trail there. We do have a constrained parking supply, and we have significant topographical change. That can be difficult, but it also can be advantageous. This is an aerial photograph with the Napanzit at the top, and looping around this way. This is extra space storage, and this is Adams Street. And these green lines represent the topography. This represents a sec, a cut through that land, to get an idea of how much topography there is. So this is the landing, Milton Landing on the right, and High Street here on the left. 50 to 64 Adams Street, I've estimated it to be about 52 feet tall, that need to be confirmed. Adams Street here in the middle, a wider street than High. This is 67 to 71 Adams, estimated at its ridge, or its peak, to be at 45 feet. So the, from the, this Adams Street sidewalk, to the back side of that property, it's about 18 feet, so that's a story and a half. You get to that side on the High Street, and it's up as much as 23 feet, which is really like two stories. So that section was cut right through the street, looking that way, so we were seeing the side of this building. This is High Street, we have, getting ahead of me, we have character at the end of High Street, towards Elliot Street, of small residential buildings, and, in some cases, parking, which serves the buildings that are on Adams Street. And then this is where Canton Ave comes down to High Street, currently the funeral home. This is an office building, this is where High Street comes in. And then this is from the parking lot behind the Verizon Building, looking back towards the park here, and where the trolley station is there. So you can see there's a lot of different character in this district. This is an image from 1890-ish, and the area that we're talking about is right in here. And it has these drawings of all the buildings that are in this area. I have an enlargement next. So this is Adams Street, and this is High Street, and this is Canton Ave coming in, and this is the Napanzit River coming around and through, so this is where the Wharf area is. I've circled these two, these are two, these are some photographs here of historic buildings that have been demolished. You can see the scale of some of these buildings is quite a bit different than what's there Same building we looked at, in the current condition, this is an undated postcard, but looking down, sorry, looking down Adams Street towards Lower Mills. And I'm guessing, from the cars, maybe this was the 50s, looking down Adams Street, again, towards Lower Mills, same building. So this is, was, on the corner where the funeral home is today. So, this was demolished in 1954, and so some of our buildings that are in this district were built in the 50s, as a result, I guess, of someone taking down these buildings, next. And this is 75 Adams, again, which was demolished in, I don't know when, but I'm guessing in a comparable time period. So we can see that these were three-story pitched roofed buildings. So back to the study work, this was from the December public meeting, and we use this, the consultant used this site where the citizens' kiosk, or the drive-thru is, as a test sample site, purely his choice in deciding which site to, to look at, as an example, of what the current zoning is. So the current zoning is a business district. In this business district, there's no minimum lot size required. The ground floor use is not defined. The amount of building you can build is not defined by a criteria that we normally think of it, which is the floor area ratio, which really just means, you take your lot, and you multiply it by a factor, and that tells you how much gross square footage you can build. It does require, or limit, the height to three stories, or 45 feet, whichever is less. And it allows it to go five stories, or 65 feet, by special permit with the Board of Appeals. There's no housing allowed currently, except for single-family, which is allowed in the commercial district. But a two-family, or a multifamily is currently not allowed in this commercial district. So therefore, there's no affordable housing requirement, but there is a high parking requirement of one parking space for every 250 square feet, when you're one-minute walk from the trolley. So, here's a little bit of what that looks like, there's no step-back requirements, you could build right up to the property line, and, under the current commercial zoning. There's nothing to telling you where you can put that volume of building, that can be three stories or 45 feet, because you can build to the property line. Now, you wouldn't be able to park all the cars required, under this current zoning, like this diagram shows, so next. So you'd end up having some kind of configuration, where you can build a building right next to your neighbors, and right on the sidewalk, and you could do your parking behind, if you can fit it all in, and you can tuck some of that in, because maybe get more than one level, maybe you could come from High Street on one level, and maybe you could come from Adams Street on the other. So this is the current zoning, there's no review, well, there is review, site plan review by the planning board. Site plan review is dish, is different than special permit, which we can get into momentarily. So as far as thinking about, if we're going to do a mixed-use, which allows housing, we don't want to provide any incentives to tear down a historic building like this one. So what's, what are the existing characteristics of a building like this one, in terms of our data, of our tools that we use in zoning? So this lot size is 15,900 square feet, the gross area of this building is 25,928, again, from the GIS and assessing site. On Adams Street, it's three stories, the topography drops down, so it's four stories at the rear. So if we said, that building, if it has 25,928, or 928 gross square feet, and it's three floors, we come up with what the footprint would be, and we came up with a footprint that says your lot is, that building is covering 54% of that lot, so that's a lot of coverage. So that's, it's something as a tool to understand what's there now, and how that might inform us with, with what we do in our proposed zoning. So the other thing we do is we say that our gross floor, or our lot area, we take our gross area, divide it by our lot area, and we come up with that floor area ratio, or FAR. So again, that's a zoning term, but what this tells us is, this building, the FAR for this building is 1.63. So what that told the planner, who was our consultant, was that he did not want to have anything in his overlay that would exceed that, because that would incentivize someone to tear that building down. This, go ahead, tear that building down, which we wouldn't want. The challenge in this district, or one of the challenges in this district, this building has 16 parking spaces right now. So it's 25,928 square feet, with 16 parking spaces, that means there's one parking space for every 1,620 square feet. But our existing zoning would require that building to have one space for every 250 square feet, or 103 parking spaces. Where would we put 103 parking spaces for a building like that? There wouldn't be any incentive to tear this building down, because they couldn't put the parking in there. In the overlay zoning, we, we were looking at that parking ratio, the consultant suggested that we cut that parking requirement down some, and he suggested cutting it down by half. So for every 500 square feet, there would be one parking space, and that would require 52, so three times more than what's on this site now. So again, the challenge becomes, why would somebody tear that down, to build the same-sized building and not be able to park it? We wouldn't want them to tear it down. The only thing, like, some of those buildings that the consultant was suggesting, is what we'd want to be able to do, is allow for a conversion to housing up above that first-floor commercial, if that owner wanted to do it. So that's, so, after having looked at that analysis, there's some sites that might benefit from this kind of an overlay. Not every site would want to be, I don't think most people would want to have, take advantage of this overlay. But what it does do is allow the multifamily over first-floor commercial, on sites of at least 3,500 square feet. Now, the sites on High Street that I pointed out earlier, the small ones, they're all smaller than that 3,500 square feet, so individually, they would not qualify under this overlay. Is everybody with me?
Yeah.
All right, good. The process that we put in place for this overlay would require a special permit process, a rigorous one. If anybody watches our special permit processes, I think they would find that they're pretty rigorous, with the planning board. And the planning board would have total discretion as to whether approve any project that came in under this overlay zoning. We'd also be looking at eliminating some things that are currently allowed in the underlying zoning, such as used-car lots, drive-throughs, car dealerships, gas stations, vehicle repair shops, and sexually-oriented businesses. We would not change the allowable height, it would still remain at three stories and 45 feet, or 45 feet, whichever is less. It would incorporate design standards, which don't exist today, so we could take, they would be required, and there's a number of them in the, in the draft zoning that could be reviewed. And then it incentivizes some things, and this, there's some things in this incentivizing that needs a lot of analysis, because it would allow an additional floor, and that would be, if there were additional affordable housing above 10%, if there were contributions made to improvements to the public realm, including Milton Landing, and for historic preservation, so we try and give an incentive to keep a building, rather than tear it The incentives apply only to properties that front onto Adams Street, not on High Street, or on any other street, actually, just on Adams Street. It allows one additional floor. And as I mentioned, it reduces the parking requirement. I think we'll just go past these two. So, where we are, is that the master plan implementation committee received a final draft from our consultant at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on Friday, June 1st. The next committee meeting is on June 18th. Our consultant's scope of work is complete, so that, they've completed the scope that was identified in their contract, so any additional work would either have to be another contract, or be handled through the planning board process. the planning board process. Traffic is something that was brought up a number of times, and through, the Master Plan Committee requested to the planning board and the Board of Selectment to approve use of funds to do a traffic study. That traffic study is due to the town, to the planning department, and to the committee on the 15th of June. So, we will have it in our hands before we meet on the 18th, and we'll see what kind of feedback we get from that study. So, on the 18th, the committee is going to review that final draft and make recommendations and have a accompanying memo that would go with that zoning, the zoning overlay district recommendation, and suggest to the planning board that they take it up. Now, the reason the planning board had brought both of these up this month is that, I mentioned timing, October town meeting was the possibility. We were trying to hit something, which is a goal of the warrant committee and of the town meeting, is to try and do zoning articles in October. But if we want to do that, we have to submit our articles to the Board of Selectmen the first week of August. And that means we don't have a lot of time in the summer months to really draft that zoning. So, we want, that's why we brought it out before the Master Plan Committee finished its work, so we can get an introduction to the public to see what we have before us that we could consider. Doesn't have to be for the October town meeting, could be the spring, doesn't have to be the spring, doesn't have to be at all. But it's something that a lot of thought has gone into, and we like people to have an open mind and consider what the benefits could be, identify drawbacks, identify ways it can be improved. And so, we're really looking to bring this to the public to get feedback. So, tonight, we're going to take as much feedback as we can, and then, just like with the Brook Road, we'll look for you to sign up if you'd like in terms of an email list, also for notification of when we have meetings. And the presentation, all of the presentations are on the Master Plan Implementation Committee's portion of the town website. So, with that, turn the lights back on. Would any members of the planning board like to make any comment before we seek public input? Okay. Who would like to speak first? Yes, please come forward. Again, name and address, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tom Hess from 229 Adams Street. It's a short stroll up the hill from the area that you're talking about, but I guess it's outside the 1,000-foot radius, because I was not aware of this process until someone anonymously dropped a draft of the proposed zoning language at my door the other day. I don't even know if it's the current draft. It's dated May 21st.
There's a more recent draft.
Okay. Well, I did have some concerns. It's possible that some of them have subsequently been addressed, and I'd just like to go over a couple of those. I do support the goals that you expressed in terms of encouraging mixed-use development and a wider range of housing units in town. I think that's a good thing. I just have some concerns about how we go about doing it. I did try to compare the language that I had with the similar situation we have over at Central Avenue, which I believe has currently, in effect, mixed-use overlay. One of the things that I noticed is that on Central Avenue, there is a formula that caps the number of housing units allowable based on site area. And I did not see anything like that for this, and I think it's a good provision to have, so people aren't packing more units in than we would like to see as a town. There also seemed to be a lack of requirements for landscaped open space. There was some mention of open space that can also be used for parking. But particularly, as we get in the proximity of the river, I think it's very important that we require landscaped open space. And I have some concerns specifically about parking, as always, everyone has concerns about parking. And I'm afraid to say that my concerns are greater after your explanation of how it was arrived at, because what you demonstrated is that we are starting off, given the existing buildings that we want to retain, with a parking shortage. And I don't think we want to lower the requirements for parking for new development and thus exacerbate that shortage. I understand that this area is near the trolley, but the trolley carries a relatively low number of riders, certainly not enough to support commercial businesses. I think if you believe that people who are going to use this business district are going to primarily arrive by trolley or on foot, you should take a look at Steel and Rye on any given evening. People drive here. And as far as, you know, people using the residential units, not everyone is going to have a job they can get to by the trolley. Not all shopping needs can be met within this district. Sometimes they may want to go to a public meeting at Tucker School. They're still going to want cars. So, I think it's problematic to reduce the parking requirement for this area. But I'm also concerned with how we provide the parking. One of the things I noticed in the zoning language is that when factoring in allowable site coverage, you can cover up to 90% of the site, including parking structures. You don't have a parking structure, it's a lower number. Also, structured parking is not counted in the floor area ratio. So, as I read that, someone could cover 90% of a lot with a parking structure up to the height limit, which I don't think would be the way we want to provide parking in this district. I think some additional language is required to make sure that that's not in a sensitive way. So, just wanted to express those concerns and thank you. And if I can find out how to get on notice for future meetings, I will do that.
Great, thank you. Ms.?
First of all, I'm amazed at you people and incredible work that you do for this incredible town that we live in. And I think one of the most important concepts of what we're doing here is that this is where our nation began, and we have to be very aware of that. So, when we change anything, we have to think of the future and look at the past. I live in 144 Adams Street for the last 55 years. It has been an incredible joy to live in this town. It has allowed me to be in the most incredible city of the world, which is Boston, and I have very easy access to that city, which is one of the great tributes of where we live and the area that we just own. It is terrible to see certain buildings, like the hat shop, that is still there and not torn down and have something that is adequate. We all should remember that the 9th of September of 1774, 70 patriots went to David's bachelor service, and they signed so forth resolutions. It reminded me of that as I'm looking at you here. And they decided then to give to Paul Revere a document. And that document said, "We refuse to pay taxes to the King of England because we lack representation. And if indeed we are now allowed to have to do that as English subjects born in this land for seven generations, we will bear arms to maintain that right." They gave it to Paul Revere. He went to the Continental Congress, then in Philadelphia, presented it to the chairman. And I can imagine that this was the discussion. "Mr. Chairman, I have here 70 signatures of what we want as Americans, no longer British subjects." The man must have looked at him and said, "This is sedition, sir. You recognize that if you sign this document, you will be hanged, and your properties will be conscripted. And you must understand that 50% of those who signed that document lost everything." In this meeting that we're having today, and we're talking about how we're going to plan and going to do, I have no idea of what you're saying. The only idea that I have is that I walk these streets, and every time that I walk the streets, go to Ashmont, I think of the past. I think of those who gave me what I have here today. And when I hear they're going to plan things, I think about two things. I think about now, of what you're going to do, and the past, which you also think about the future. Think what we have here. We have the ability, every one of you here, to take the subway and go to one of the great cities of the world in 30 minutes. That is an incredible asset. And if somebody comes to me, says, "I'm going to build this," and I'm going to look at him, and I said, "Do you know anything about the so forth resolutions?" I don't want to talk to you. I don't know who you are. Because I'm looking up today, but I have to look at the future. I have a river, and I can very well see that many years from now, we may have helicopters coming in in the area that we're talking about. And we will have ships that can go into the city, because it becomes much easier to do that. And obviously, the biggest thing that I would want is to live in a place in which I have access to the Museum of Fine Arts, that I can go to the Museum of Science, that I can walk down the streets of Boston in 30 minutes. That's a big, big asset that we have here. We're discussing that here now. I'm a very proud American. I don't want to say this. I may be more proud of a person that lives in this city of modern. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Who really wants to follow that, right? But was there someone who would like to come forward? Thank you.
Hi, who are you?
Can everybody hear me?
No, we need that between.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. Any rate, Michael Zimmer, 194 Canton Avenue, former Precinct 3 meeting member and former planning board member. So, nice to meet you. I want to applaud you for the work that you've done here, long overdue, very nice presentation that you made. Just a couple of concerns. I look at the complexity of the overlay district, and one of the things I think about is how difficult they can be to administrate. So, one of the things that can be most difficult in an overlay district, that's as complex as this, with so many different incentives and variables associated with it, it can be difficult to control and administrate. And we do have a special permit process that can be rigorous. I've experienced it many times. But there's also the Board of Appeals that can override those things and unfortunately set a precedent. And once that precedent is set, all your best-laid plans can be interrupted. So, there's a couple of things that, you know, I'd like to just suggest. I know there's a traffic study coming out in the 15th or on the 15th, and that's important to understand. But I'd like to know if every property has been looked at and optimized for a build-out, because any investor that comes in here is going to look at the opportunities, and they're going to optimize the opportunity for each parcel. And do we have a maximum-optimized build-out that shows ultimately, whether it's tomorrow or it's 10 years from now, how dense everything can be, and will a traffic study address that?
We don't have that build-out analysis yet. I agree with you, we need that. So, I do think that would be something that's forthcoming.
Okay, right. That's a primary concern I have. The other concern I have is that we do need the variable housing. I would like to see a little bit more of an incentive for ownership rather than rental properties. And I would also like, because I didn't see it in any of the information that I read, you know, a little bit more of an insight of what the planning board has as a vision of what kind of housing would be there in terms of size, rooms, and accommodations. When I did 88 Warf and also 36 Central, I think it was, with Mike Rogers and Alex and a bunch of other people, we kind of knew what was going to be built there in room sizes and stuff like that. So, possibly with the optimization planning, we can also have some idea of what kind of rooms can be created, so we don't get a bunch of smalls and over-density. And the last thing that I would like to say is that, in reading the process, I know how difficult it can be to get people engaged, but I really don't think it was justice just to reach out to people within 1,000 feet of 88 Warf. I'm on Canton Avenue, not too far away. There's a lot of people there. Quite frankly, I had no idea about this until I got an email three days ago. And so, I scurried to read all about this. And when I looked at the events, what really happened is that you did your outreach in November and December and January, when everybody's on vacation mode. It's the holidays.
You're here on vacation this summer, too.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, it might be the reason why you had only 138 responses, which is less than .003%, less than 1/3% of the town represented in that. So, I would ask that maybe, you know, an eight-month process that you're trying to get through very quickly. I did a bunch of these overlays, and eight months is very fast, and trying to squeeze it in this fall is very fast. And I think we ought to just take a step back and make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences that come out of this, because you're doing a good job. You know, and the town is over, you know, has needed this for a while. And in the 60s and 70s and 80s, the town went through some hard times. When I moved here in 89, I remember the first thing I read in the paper was that somebody, you know, got beaten up in Cunningham Park, and something terrible happened on Elliot Street. We were like, "What happened?" So, the town has recovered, it's been conservative, it hasn't addressed these things for a long while. It's needed. Thank you very much for doing it. But that also doesn't mean that we should rush to a decision, and that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
As far as the outreach, we would welcome all of you helping us with outreach, because we've posted it on a lot of different social media. We contacted the Milton Times. We don't do a mailing of the districts on a study, but when we have something that comes before us that requires a notice, we have. Maybe that's something we could consider. However, there are, you know, financial implications of that as well. But if you have suggestions of how else the word can spread more broadly, we're welcome to take your suggestions. Next, anybody else? Yes?
My name's Richard Howe. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 3. And I will confess to looking at my cellphone today when I was in the car, coming back from St. Elizabeth's Hospital. My wife and I had an appointment to meet some friends for dinner at 5:30, and I was at the top of Adams Street in front of that old library there at the entrance to the Lower Mills area. And she texted me, and she says, "We have a dinner appointment at 5:30." And when? you be home?" And I said, you know, "I'll be home as I'm in Lower Mills, I'll be home soon." So, a half an hour later, I arrived at 5:30 at my house at 241 Adams Street, which is at the top of Milton Hill. So, I can save you the traffic study. I can tell you, it's really bad. The other thing, from what I can tell, firstly, I think you brought up some things tonight that I wasn't aware of with respect to really needed changes in the zoning law that deal with problems that haven't been dealt with. But I can, I believe, if I understand what we're talking about, there are going to be far too many residences. There could be, you know, the maximization of profit motive is huge. And to the extent that the zoning law allows all this development of apartment buildings, it will only exacerbate the difficulties that you have with traffic there. And so, I would like to see some change that would limit the development of apartment buildings. Thank you.
You can be next back there.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not as eloquent as half the people that just got up before me, so I'd like to apologize in advance. Can you all hear me? All right. So, I am not a Precinct 3 town meeting member. I live in Precinct 3. What's really important here is I actually live in the village. I don't live up top the hill, I don't live a block away from the village. We live in the village. And I represent my neighbors with the newly-formed Milton Village Neighborhood Association. And we oppose the drafting of this as it is phrased right now. We're not anti-business. We live among the businesses. We have great rapport with the businesses that are currently there. And let me tell you, they're all rather successful based on the traffic we have to deal with getting out of our driveway on High Street. Don't let anyone tell you that there's not a lot of activity going on on High Street, let alone trying to get home on Adams Street. So, what we're trying to say is, and I have to refer to notes, because I really can't talk as well as the men here that have come before me right now. But we support the comments made that many of you might have seen in the Milton Times today by the Milton Landing Condominium Trust. We support the Milton Yacht Club and their comments that they've made public. And we challenge the verbiage of the proposal as it stands now. The comments made earlier this evening about this proposal that talks about no study done for the maximization of what could potentially happen will be the destruction of what is a historical district. On High Street, there's probably three businesses, four businesses. The rest are residential. No one knows this, because you're all stuck on Adams Street trying to get home, and High Street, for those who are zipping through trying to avoid Adams Street. And today, as a matter of fact, I had the pleasure of dealing with someone going the wrong way down High Street, and then parking under the "do not park" sign right in front of my driveway, preventing us from getting out. So, that's just on a normal day, without millions of condos coming in, without millions of apartments coming in. And if we max out the proposals as they're phrased right now, hundreds of units, hundreds of people, they're not going to take the tea. Milton doesn't. We like our personal chariots. We have them, we use them. They're not going to, you know, rent bicycles to get to work. First snowstorm on Milton Hill when you're moving into there? They're not going to ride bicycles or schlepped down, you know, the hill to, you know, when you can just get in your own car and go. These people will have visitors. What about the visiting traffic? So, you have, you know, downsizing older people. I'm 52, and my classified as older, I hope not. But, you know, we have, you know, young people trying to come out and, you know, get an apartment, and older people trying to downsize, and they're all going to have a car, they're all going to have visitors. There's no way with the congestion that there is right now, and it's tolerable now. It won't be tolerable when it's maxed out. And all the properties, you have to consider, the Associate's Building could be converted, Dolan Funeral Home could be converted. It's up for lease right now, effective July 1, June 1, I believe. The former DeWolf Building could be maxed out right now, and that is in the Milton Hill Historic District. By the way, there are six historic districts in town. I believe in the last meeting about Brook Road, there was, someone said there's no historic districts. There are six. I'll refer to my notes. There is Milton Hill Historic District, there's the Milton Center Historic District, there's the Milton Railway Village Historic District, the Milton Cemetery Historic District, Scotts Woods Historic District, and Brush Hill Historic District. And you can check that on the Milton Hill, I mean, I'm sorry, the Milton Commission, Historical Commission's website. They list the districts. Milton Village should be a historic district. It is flanked by the historical properties of Milton Hill. The Milton Village is also flanked by the historical properties of the industrial district where the Baker Chocolate factories are. Those are already historic districts. So, you know, as residents who live and work among these businesses that are already there, it's already mixed-use right now, we're just not in one building mixed-use. It's already mixed-use. We just really, we're really just upset with the language as it is written. And you'll forgive me, it's a much more emotional issue for us who are stuck in it than to those who, like, live down the street and have an opinion about it. So, please consider that. My house was built in 1791. 1791, you know? They're going to, they're saying that if they don't change the zoning, that hopefully, my neighbor might consider building right out to the lot three feet off my granite foundation. I would hope they'd be more neighborly and considerate. I don't think that the planning board should use it as a threat. I would think that the Ferrucis, who we live next door to, who have the business properties, would work with the neighbors before, you know, shocking us with diggers and cranes right up to our granite foundation. Our house will fall right down onto Adams Street. It's half on landfill, because some of the houses on Adams Street are on landfill when they were transferred from Milton Worf up to the Adams Street-High Street area. My house is original to the street. We'd like not to see it damaged, ruined, destroyed, and it's only a story and a half. Imagine a four-story building going up beside it. Or three with an incentive floor if they maybe pay for the dock for the rowing crew. So, there we go. Thank you.
I just want to make sure it's clear that incentive zoning is not recommended for any properties on High Street. So, having somebody build next to you on High Street. And on the historic districts, on the historic districts, there's different kinds of historic districts, the kind you're talking about are on the National Register of Historic Places, but that is not a state-regulated kind of district, or, and therefore, there's no, a property could be demolished in those districts, for example. Yeah. But, so, the notion, or the comment that I made about historic districts is relative to the state-regulated kind of historic district, which puts regulatory constraints on what can happen in that district. Some people like that, some people don't, because it will also restrict what the property owners can do, their own property. So, sometimes they want to restrict what their neighbors can do, but they don't want to restrict what they can do. There's, that's why the state requires a very lengthy process for that, and it is something where the Historical Commission has made a request, because this is the way the state process works, is the request goes to the Board of Selectmen to form a study committee, and then the study committee will begin that process. But the end of that process would be a vote of town meeting, again, a 2/3 vote of town meeting. So, that's a different kind of historic district. I just want to make sure people understand the difference. Someone else?
Hi.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Snuck right up there. Hi, I'm Tom Goltz. I live at West Side Road, which is in Precinct 3, right on the edge of the High Street District. And I just have one simple question that kind of builds on something that Michael Zimmer had asked earlier. He asked you if you were going to calculate the total potential density of this area. And having sat through the previous presentation that you gave about the Brook Road area, and then thought back about the history of Milton and development that I've seen, there's a lack, to my experience, of an aggregated perspective on the development and density. So, we'll look at the density of this area, and then we'll have another conversation about the density of East Milton Square on another time, and those people will argue about that. Now, we're going to talk about Brook Road, and pretty soon, we'll be talking, you know, about other places in this town. Who's looking at the town at the whole and saying, "How many more people do we want to bring into this town? How dense do we make this town? Do we want this town to become Jamaica Plain? Or do we want to keep it the oasis that it is? It's unique within Route 128. There is not another town with the level of green space that Milton has that will create value to your property values, if that's what you care about. I'm much less concerned about allowing outside developers to come into our town and maximize their profitability from that." And I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it should be a consideration of those who, of us who live here now and hope to live here indefinitely.
The comprehensive look at the town was the master plan process, which was comprehensive and covered the whole town. And then, out of that, there was recommendations to study specific areas and specific conditions. So, the planning board is tackling them right now. We've got a little bit of a gap in our applications to the board for special permits or site plan review or subdivision requests. When those come in, we have very strict timelines that we have to abide by. So, some of this zoning, right now, we have a window of opportunity of time, but that could change tomorrow. And therefore, we, to do the whole town, would take more than what this planning board's capacity could be, and probably more than our planning department's capacity would be. And we'd be looking at another outside consultant kind of arrangement. But there are, the one thing that the master plan committee has heard quite a bit is about the traffic. And one of the next, in the next fiscal year, which begins in July, what's been discussed is town-wide traffic analysis. It's something that we have felt is necessary. Everybody, no matter which neighborhood you go to, has traffic problems. And right now, sometimes traffic gets pushed from one neighborhood to another by signs that get put up, and it has unintended consequences. So, a town-wide study would help with that. And that's where the traffic study that's being done in Milton Village goes beyond that business district, to see what's happening on those side roads, to see if that, some of what's been happening on Adams Street is a result of measures that are being taken on other streets. And so, that is really important, but the capacity issue is one of the reasons why it's not all done at one time. Next? Yes? Please come forward.
My name's Mike Roberts. I'm, I live, I live in Milton Village. Used to live on Herrick Drive, and I've been involved in a lot of projects around the town. Was on the Technology Committee for a while, and I've been an active developer in the town. I'm not the developer from the outside, I'm the developer for the inside. I developed 36 Central Avenue, which I think is a pretty good project. And I've been through the process of trying to take areas of our town that are really underperforming at every level. They just haven't kept up with the time, with the times, and they've really prevented owners from really knowing what they can do with their property, especially in a world that's changing very, very quickly. And so, I think we could argue the merits of this particular proposal. And I think that's been done a lot during the meetings, that the master planning committee is held. There have been a lot of meetings, they've tried to go over the many, many different issues that are involved in rezoning. The thing that I'd like to mention is that we do have problems in Milton Village right now. We have significant problems, and we have to deal with those problems, and we can't just stand still. If we stand still, it's going to be worse for us than better. I live in a house that has traffic in the mornings and in the evening so much that you can't even move. That's not caused by the residents, it's not caused by what 40, the Wall Street Project, it's caused by computer applications that route people through our town, because they can't get into Boston, because nobody's done any of the planning. And when anybody does the studies, that's what the studies show, residential development doesn't create the traffic. Traffic is created from outside of our town, people coming into our town, and that's a problem that has to be dealt with, and the citizens just have to begin to look at that particular problem. The real problem we have, that I think the committee has pointed out, is that we have a mess in Milton Village right now. Many of the historic buildings that look so beautiful in a much more densely populated, if you look at the drawings from years ago, it was a very dense area, and it was very beautiful. Density isn't necessarily the worst thing that happened. The problem was the beautiful buildings got torn down, because nobody was thinking about the beautiful buildings, and they put up ugly buildings. Ugly buildings that don't perform economically, they don't perform in any way that help our town. They don't create vibrancy, they don't create life, they don't do anything. And what we have right now in the zoning is zoning that will, if anybody's going to do anything, they're going to create ugly box buildings that are messes with parking, which they can now build in order to make a commercial development. So, living where I am, I've sat on, I'm vilified throughout the town, because I also happen to own the Swift Hat Shop. It's a house that I would like to redevelop. The problem is, you can't redevelop it under the zoning, because the zoning has it zoned as commercial, and there's no market for commercial in this particular town. There's a market for people who want to live next to the subway, where they can take the train and get in there in eight minutes. I take the train. I think people who would live there would take the train in there if they could walk to the train. I think if people lived in Milton Village, you wouldn't see all the cars going to Steel and Rye, because they could walk to Steel and Rye. The problem is, we don't have zoning that allows you to do anything in this district that will allow people to live there together in a community. So, I'm here to say to you, I'd like to develop my particular property, but I'd like to see the properties across the street look a little bit more beautiful. I'd like to see people bustling along the streets. I'd like to see people living together, enjoying their community like they used to when people lived together. So, I would encourage you to work on this plan, improve this plan, find out the things in the plan that don't work. I have a development right now in Cohasset Village, and I'll close with this. It's exactly the same sort of thing, it's a different kind of housing they're building there. It's creating buzz in the town. People are coming into the town, they're empty nesters, they're coming in to live, they're buying my, the buildings I'm building right now, and they're doing it, they're not bringing kids into, students into the, into the town. They're living downtown, because people at my age want to be able to walk to the restaurant, they want to be able to walk to the store, and they want to be able to say hello to their neighbors. So, I think this particular initiative, you know, it has its ups and its downs, it has its pluses and its minuses, like all things do. But on the zoning side of things, I think it is an excellent start. These people have listened to what people have to say, they've incorporated what people said in a tremendous outreach, and I would encourage everybody here to get involved in the process, begin to look at what they're trying to do, and tweak the things so that we can have a village that's a real village, where we can live together, instead of someplace that has traffic snakes coming in and out all the time and nobody walking along. So, that's my, my little piece.
I'm Andrew Maloney. I have been in Milton since 1990. I live on the cut-through street known as Reed'sdale Road. Lauren, if I could ask you to go to one of the photographs of the landing, please. So, I want to address everyone tonight in my capacity as a member of the Milton Yacht Club, which is a 100-year-old nonprofit that provides boating access to residents of Milton and throughout the Napaunset Valley watershed. And we've been at most of these meetings, and we've taken issue with the scope, the scale, the size, the maximum density, and the parking that's required as a result of that. And particularly, if you go to the town's website and look at the Master Plan Implementation Committee for the, for the village, basically, what happens, the yacht club rents the old lockup, the Milton lockup, on a lease from the town, which has expired. We have two boatyards. This boatyard goes away. It becomes a park, it becomes public parking. There's a ramp here for the crew team, and we support the crew team and their efforts to try to find a permanent home on the Napaunset. But the rent that we pay to Parks and Recs each year, 50% of that comes from boat storage. And if we lose boat storage, we jeopardize the ability of the yacht club to survive. So, we asked the planning board... So we ask the planning board to think about the development plan, especially Milton Landing. We are 13 square miles, we have two tenths of one square mile of waterfront in, in Milton. So I want to ask you to think about your, in, as a member of the planning board and to the selectmen as well, in the capacity of a fiduciary of preserving the historic waterfront and landing for all of the residents of the town. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Anne Soloney. I live at 22 Morton Road, not quite in the village, but kind of in the village. I'm an architect, and I will tell you, the developers are coming, and they're going to come in and develop and do, they'll threaten 40B, they'll do, get special permits, they will develop this if we don't help control the development. Excuse me. And I think that's what this committee is doing. They have some great ideas, needs adjusting, but they need your support to get this to be right, or it's not going to be Milton Village anymore. Thank you.
I live at 25 Canton Ave. I've lived there for 29 years now. So I live on the road that is directly behind High Street. My neighbors who are on the other side of the street face the back of High Street. It's right behind the Milton Hill House, so, no, you can't see it there. So I also have served as chairman of the Milton Hill Neighbor Association for about the past 10 years, and I have had many, many conversations with people over the last week. So the concern that people have brought up is, one of the things that you brought up is, this is a fairly compressed time period to try and hit the August deadline for the, the printing of the warrant and the October town meeting. And I think that that really has sort of adopted this frenzy amongst people. We all got the mailings, we all got the flyers, we've all seen the emails going around. What I would ask, and what I've asked some of the planning board people is, I, I think this is a really good idea, I think you guys are doing a great job, I think there's definitely some improvements that can be done down there. Nobody really likes the Citizens Bank drive-through building, it really doesn't add anything to the neighborhood. You know, there's some buildings down there that, in the historic photos, were really nice, and as somebody pointed out, in the 70s, they just lost all sense of architecture. So, you know, could things be done? Could other developments be there? Yes. I think we have to think back to when Milton Landing was developed. Oh, sorry. When Milton Landing was developed, it was a really interesting idea by a really good architect and developer. And what they did was, they went through a really long process of trying to listen to the neighborhood, they had a lot of meetings, but what they did was, they really spent a lot of time to get everyone's impact. It got down to the color of the grout. It got down to all sorts of, should the bricks look like the bricks at the top of the hill? I think that ultimately, people are going to be in favor of something down here because it is coming, as Ellen said. I don't think there's any question that there's going to be development, that's not going to be a bank there forever. Who knows if we'll even have bank branches in 10 years. But what I think, I, I have actually emailed Denny, thank you, Denny. I think what we need to do is just take a step back and say, let's really analyze this. We've got two pieces here. We've got the landing by the water, and we've got the high Adams Street. And I mean, we have three things, so there's Adams Street and there's High Street. I think everybody has their own concerns for that, and I, what I'd like to see is, first of all, a little more notice of the meetings. I know you guys do your normal notices, but I think in order to really get the kind of turnout we want and the input, because what I see in this process is, if it gets rushed through, if we try and do what we can, it's just going to get rejected at the October town meeting. I've been a town meeting member for 20 years. I, I get it, that's kind of what happens.
It's going to be referred for further study.
Yeah, it's going to be referred for further study, and it, nothing's going to happen and we'll start all over again. So what I'd like to see is, and as Michael Zimmer said, this is a difficult time, you know, we, we're getting this in the beginning of the summer, people are going to start going away. I'm usually the only person in my neighborhood at some point during the summer, so, we have five houses, it's not the entire neighborhood. So what I, what I think I would recommend, and the people that I've been talking to have recommended, is really what we need to do is, let's make sure that we look at this carefully, let's get as much input as we can, let's get as much notice as we can. Most of us heard about this on Saturday and Monday, so, you know, obviously that's, and I live within 100 feet of this, maybe 200 feet. I, I do take the trolley every day, every single day, five days a week, unless I have to drive, but that's once a month. So it, it is a great neighborhood. When this first came out, we actually talked about, you know, gee, it would be great if there were more things there that we could walk to, because now we, we have to drive. So would it be great to have a coffee shop there? Can I see myself in 15 or 20 years potentially living there? Absolutely. But I think we need to really take time, make sure we get this right, make sure there's a lot of input from people in the neighborhood, because the only way it's going to pass is if it has neighborhood approval and neighborhood support, and the only way we're going to get that is if we have enough meetings where we can sort of bring that consensus along. As I said, it was a long process for 88 Wharf, Milton Landing, but it worked. And I think that that's part of the process, is just making sure that we get that input and let's do it right the first time and not have to refer it back. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Can I be heard in the back? I'll try not to echo too many comments that have already been made, very good comments, I think, regarding density and parking and things of that nature. First, I'd like to thank you for the work that's been done here, and then I'd like to complain. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. My name's George Howard, and I'm at number four Hutcheson Street. And I just did the Google Maps thing there, and I'm 1,500 feet from 88 Wharf. Yeah. So, so it, it just seems to me that, you know, instead of going from the farthest edge, from the interior of the, the area, you probably should do your notifications from the edge, from like, right here, as opposed to all the way over there. It doesn't, I mean, you're, you're obviously going to miss a whole lot of people if you go as far into the, into the thing as you possibly can. I'm not saying this happened, but it gives the impression that someone's not trying to notify everyone. That's the impression that it gives. I'm not saying that that's the case. I believe that everyone's trying to work as hard as they possibly can to, number one, make our community as, as wonderful as it possibly can be. I moved to Milton from Jamaica Plain, the heart of Jamaica Plain, so we don't want that. No, no, we don't want that at all. It's, it's absolutely horrible. Today I was leaving the Star Market, and to get from the Dunkin' Donuts to where Adams and Randolph meet, took 15 minutes. 15 minutes. You can walk that in like five. And I can walk it with five, and I have a six and a three-year-old. So, so if, if we, if we develop this area, and I do believe it needs to be developed, we all need taxes so that my property taxes can be lowered. If we develop this area, there's going to be some serious, serious impact. Developing this area is a good thing, we just need to make sure that we have enough community input, make sure that more people are notified about what's going on, because if you try to rush this through, you'll have people with the pitchforks. I'll be one of them.
I live at 196 School Street, I've lived there for 31 years. And I would just like a little clarification on what the historic, which the historic buildings are, and, and how well they're protected. So the Mason Building is the big one that's on Adams from 50 to 60-something, and then there's the Bank Building, so, and what else? What's protected from being razed?
Are you, you mean currently, or you mean?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, the only thing that protects any property from being razed right now is the demolition delay bylaw, which comes via the, as I mentioned earlier, the building official would flag it, and then it would go to the historical commission. But that only delays it. The, really, the way to protect it is to really think about a historic district in the regulatory way that I explained earlier, the difference between the districts. Because, for example, some towns have very strict districts, and it's very difficult to change anything. You, you want to change your paint color on your house, it has to get approved. And so it's really up to a town to go through and see what level that they want to take that to, because, as I said also earlier, some people want that and some people don't. So, but as far as the age of the buildings, again, this is from our town website that these were pulled from. There's quite a number of them, I'm sure they were all originally built in the 17 and 1800s, but some of them were torn down, because you'll see 1951 for 33 High Street, 1954 for 40 Adams Street, 1952 for 2 and 6 Adams Street. So I'm, I'm sure that there were probably buildings that were torn down when those buildings were built. I don't have records of those. 1964 for 90 Adams Street. You know, so there's, but there's no protections, other than the demolition delay bylaw right now.
But you said that in your plan, you want to protect...
So in our plan, what we're suggesting is that we would not incentivize any demolition. So in other words, don't give enough of an incentive that would mean somebody would want to tear down a historic asset. But the planning board and zoning can't put that same kind of restriction on it that historic district would put on it. That's a different process.
Can we go back to the picture of, it was a really beautiful picture of early Adams Street?
Yeah.
With trees along it, that I thought was stunning.
Well, that's one of the things I did not highlight, but one of the things in the zoning is that would require wider sidewalks so we could have, the town has adopted what's called the Complete Streets Program, and that's a statewide initiative.
There, that one.
Is, is so that you can get street trees in, and you have to have a, a wide enough sidewalk to do it. And again, some of these sites that are really constrained in terms of their dimensions, it might be difficult to do. But it is something that's in the current proposed overlay zoning, that's not in the underlying zoning. So again, another way to try and get an improvement in the overlay. But if you do a zoning that basically is less than what the underlying zoning does, it's not likely that anybody will use the overlay zoning. For example, we had, my understanding is, a part of our bylaw that allowed for cluster development, and it was on the books for 20 years, and the planning board received zero applications under that until that bylaw was revised several years ago. And now we have several applications that came in and were approved in my tenure of the last three years on the planning board. And it's because you have to kind of, you can't, the overlay won't be, it will be a waste of time if it's not something that's a useful tool. So it's a right, it's the balance between, you know, giving somebody an alternative to what they could do with the existing property, but not restricting it so much that they're not going to use it.
Right. Well, I, as a resident of 30-something years, I have to admit, I, this area has become somewhat dead. We've got a lot of real estate offices, we've got banks, there's one very nice hardware store, and, you know, the post office, and, you know, hairdresser. But it would be lovely if there was a coffee shop, it would be lovely if this wasn't a dead area, which it seems, and we have all these people in the lower mills, I'm sure they would use that. I'm not thrilled about having a lot more housing in there, but I would love to see brick returned to this strip and trees, and it looks fascin, I mean, this is attractive as compared to what we have now. So if you could get back to an interesting little group of shops, it would be quite nice, I think.
Well, that's one of the things, when you have enough places that people can walk to, then it's different than when it looks like something you're going to speed right through.
Right.
And there's a lot of data about that kind of, you know, when you put in more active uses, how it slows traffic down. And that's a strategy that's used in planning, and it, but, but having here, one of the interesting things is the scale that you get, because it's a little, in some ways, you know, with the trees and with, when you're going through, it's, it doesn't have that sort of openness, you know, sort of bleed out of it, right.
Anyway, on to the next.
So I'm Valerie, and I think I win because I've been in and out of here for 50 years on 173 Adams Street, so, but, um...
You're louder?
Sorry, anyways, now you know how old I am. I just wanted to mention something I haven't heard at all, and as a long-term person, that in the last, I think, 10 years, when they've developed the Walter Baker Chocolate Factory into some beautiful houses, which are really giving opportunity for people to live in the area, and older people I know have moved there as well, that, that has really increased the density hugely in that area that I, I can see, which is nice. But also, it's, I haven't heard that taken into consideration at all as far as, it's already in that area. Like, how many people have already moved into that area that were not there 10 years ago? It's huge, huge number of people. And also to consider that this is a jewel for the rest of the whole town of Milton and those, and anybody who passes through, driving in the morning, that is coming through, that this is the very last special place you have before you get into the city, that perhaps, maybe, this is something for all of Milton to enjoy, not for it just to become a residential place, that it's a special, I've always loved the river there, there's, if you walk down the stairs to the train, there's this peace on the river as you're, the sun is coming up, as you're going to the train, it's just, maybe just as a space, not just as a residency, that is something for everyone, not just people within a thousand feet of the city, of the line.
Do you need a name? Do you need something? I'm sorry, can you provide your last name to Julia? Anyone else? All right, last chance, last call. All right, thank you. We really appreciate your being here and that you're paying attention, and we do encourage your input and participation. Thanks. Lauren has some sign-up sheets right here on the front table.
You can use, you can use our website, too. If you go to the planning department, Lauren and my website, my email are there. If you get home, you want to go and do it from home, you send us an email and we will put you on the list.
Thank you. Thank you for reaching out to us.
Yes. We send all of those back to the different boards.
Thank you very much.
There's some for citizens that was out there. That's great. That's really nice.
Isn't that something which you guys have that the town is...
Oh, well, thanks very much.
The yellow one.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
There is a traffic, there means one time during the day when we try to land, to take
down, and if people are moving, they're going to be there as well.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Guys.
He's very responsive, he might be able to save in time.
I haven't told you about that.
Folks, folks, please, we have another item on our agenda, and a gentleman is here to speak to us, so if you could please take your conversations to the hallway.
My name's Danny.
Thank you for coming.
I'm losing it.
Oh, my God.
We all over there.
I can't, what can I do?
You can come up right here, because I don't know who he is myself.
You can win a jeopardy with the Dutch island, the different type of trees.
Folks, if you can clear the room, we have another meeting.
Does it, does it have a lot of trees on that tree now?
We actually, we actually, right up there.
The train is there, the light waves, the, the, right in front of the camera, the
citizen bank.
Please come to the right.
Oh, wow.
Just trying to, you want me to go right back here?
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna get Carol Stock.
Are we on?
I think he's gonna finish his item, and then I'll ask him.
Can I call over here?
Oh, no, you can come right over here, yeah, thanks. We're still on our mics.
Okay, I just want to tell Carol.
Okay.
Sure.
Just give us one more minute, okay?
Find my agenda.
Absolutely.
No, I know, but I'm looking for my agenda.
Oh.
Well, here it is, okay.
Kind of tough. Sorry, we may have shifted the agenda around a little bit, because we had so many people. As soon as we get Danny Bill, we'll have you.
Carol, nice to see you.
Can you lead this discussion?
Yeah.
Can you begin this discussion?
Yes, that's why I was going down.
Okay.
We still...
Okay.
Okay. We are still conducting our meeting, and what I'd like to say on the administrative items, I'd like to suggest, oh, I'd like to note that the next meeting of the Planning Board will be a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment, and it'll be held on June 21st. And then meeting following that, our next one would be on July 12th. I'd like to defer the approval of minutes and the discussion of temporary signed bylaw to our next meeting on the 21st, if members are amenable to that.
Yes.
Okay. With that, we will move to 8 Parkwood Drive Agreement, and Bill's going to lead this discussion.
Okay. We got a, we got a maintenance plan from Nancy Letanzio the other day. I forwarded that same plan to you. In that plan, it talks about the watering, it talks about the meters, it talks about the, it talks about replacing plants for the next three years, it talks about when the watering will be done for the next three years. The town has installed two meters. One meter is for the house, one meter is for the irrigation to that lot. Both of the meters are in Mr. Caneely's name. The surety has been agreed to in theory, it's just a matter of getting the $12,000 checks that was required by the tree warden. The deal there would be that there would be three $4,000 checks, one would be returned each of the next three years. The idea of the surety is that should the trees not be replaced, we could potentially use that money. We wouldn't use that money if Mr. Caneely replaced them himself. The agreement already has monthly, monthly follow-up and checking of those plants by his landscape architect. There's another follow-up to it every spring. There's a follow-up in November and the spring. The plants are in, the plants have been being watered. Think I get everything, right?
I think so.
Okay.
And would you like to add?
My name is Christoph Henry, and I'm here representing the Hillside Neighborhood Association. I'm the vice president. Jason, who's the president, couldn't be here tonight due to a personal issue. But as you know, you know, everybody in the neighborhood was distressed because of the destruction of those 70 town trees along the scenic by road of Hillside. And we're very happy that the remediation is taken into account to reverse the damage to those property values and the scenic environment. The two questions that we had was, one would be, you know, which you already addressed, the concern of the watering and the maintenance of the plantings that was agreed, and we would love to get a copy, a written copy of that agreement between Mr. Caneely and appropriate town representatives, which I think is the tree warden right now, right? So just to have something in writing, or would be...
The agreement, agreement went to the board.
Okay.
And the agreement went to Mrs. Stalker earlier this evening.
In writing, okay, super. Yeah.
So you sent me the agreement.
You sent me that you didn't get it. I sent it to that email while I was sitting right there.
That's super.
Thank you.
You're fast. That's good. Perfect. So we would just like to have this as, as the association, the Neighborhood Association, and also, because we'll take it upon us to help, you know, monitor the health of the trees, and Carol and everybody in the association is quite excited. The design with the native plants is very attractive, and a wetland specialist, actually, we sent told that the water was down two and a half feet. So, you know, after initially some warm weather and so on, it's working well. So definitely, our mutual goal is the survival of the plantings, and so that we can repair the damage that was done, and make our neighborhood just the way it should be. So thank you for all the efforts on that.
Thank you for your patience tonight in waiting until this hour. Danny? I don't know if I missed this part, did we discuss bond? I'm sorry. I don't know if I missed this, when you described the paperwork that you sent us. Did you...
I did not give you the decreasing, the decreasing surety that Branch required. There is no application, so there's nothing that goes back to this board. That requirement was from the tree warden to Mr. Caneely. So there was an agreement between, that's what Branch wanted, was $12,000. He wanted it to decrease over the three years. My suggestion was very similar to what we did for Maureen Way, that she gave us a series of checks, that she gets back her checks when she reaches certain points. Done the same thing on a few other sites. Mr. Caneely agreed to, agreed to it in principle, and I talked to his landscape architect about the same thing, and she was going to talk to him about it, but that was yesterday.
So...
I mean, I think the point is, to date, he's got $60,000 of restitution that he has done. He's, you know, right after he met with this board, and the board and Branch came back with the $15,000 fine, the next morning, he was in with a check for $15,000. So I don't know that he's, not going anywhere.
I guess I have, I have a question, which is...
Just a quick follow-up. Is there, are there certified checks?
They would be certified checks. They'd be bank checks, cashier, made out to cash.
Thanks. So it's basically a letter of credit?
Yes.
The money's there. Okay, great.
If I, right, it's a, when I give it back to him, he can go back and put it in his account, spend it, however.
Okay, thank you.
Carol, you wish to make a comment or ask a question?
I had a couple of questions, and one is, if Miss, this is going through Branch Lane, if he moves to Florida or is not around, what happens then?
Goes to the tree warden. The town would appoint another tree warden.
The town would appoint another tree warden, would they?
Tree warden is a, one of our requirements in our bylaws.
Okay, so you have to have a tree warden now. And Nancy Letanzio's report, which is going to be monthly on the condition of the trees...
That's in that agreement.
Is it possible for Mr. Van Reet and, to get a copy?
Hillside.
The Hillside, or whoever's representing the Hillside Neighborhood Association to get a copy?
I can ask for that.
And if the Hillside Neighborhood Association has observations, because they're monitoring it, too, they would give them, bring them to Mr. Branch Lane, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you might have been about to say something about the bond earlier. I'm sorry. We were talking about it.
When I worked with, and everything, it's talking about the money that you have to do it up like. You take $60,000 out of that, it takes a lot away from the house to finish it. So I really don't know if, at this very point in time, I can come up with $12,000, another $12,000 to hand over, which would end up at the end of my project, not being able to finish it. Now, I have no problem giving the money when I have the money. You know what I mean? But if I hand it over now, like, I don't know where I'm going to be at the end of this project. Like, will I have the money to finish it, to finish the landscaping outside? Like, I could give, I don't know, I'm not sure what I'm going to do, to tell you the truth.
Is there, will you have the money when the house sells? Or are you, are you living in the house?
Oh, no, I couldn't. No, I'm not. So would you anticipate having the $12,000 when the house sells? Oh, yeah, definitely. We could theoretically do a lien against the property that would have to get cleared in order to transfer title.
You could do a holdback, which wouldn't look as daunting as a lien...
Correct.
...when he goes to sell the house. Do you know what that means?
Yeah, we could write up in the contract that once the property is sold, the $12,000 goes to the town. And then if for some reason it didn't transfer...
Well, if you sell it in less than three years, yes. If you sell it in three years, you're still on the hook for making it all look good anyways.
That's true.
Because you're still there.
Oh, yeah.
So it behooves you to, so quick.
So with a holdback... The last thing I want to say... With a holdback, Bill, if the money wasn't transferred, you still have an IOU to the town, and at that point, you could put a lien on the house.
Yes.
Got it. Now, there's nothing saying if I, when I come into my project, I'll know better, and I might just have the $12,000 and be able to give it to you.
And then you can clear it.
That's what he just said. Then you clear it. Yes. Or we'd say if I, because I do all the work, too, like, if I get a check in between, I'll come into the town, and I'll give the money, like.
Yes.
I'm just saying, I don't think I'll be able to walk in tomorrow or Monday morning with a $12,000 check.
And I know that, yes.
I think a holdback, that's transferable into a lien if we get... But I think before I sell the house, I will get, I will get the money to you before the house is sold, or... We just have to have a mechanism to cover it if you do sell the house.
Right. He's already, he already is on the hook for the next three years, per the statement that he's already agreed to and signed, so...
So we'll get a copy of that?
You have it.
No, I mean a copy of this additional part of it?
Yes.
I actually, I don't know, but I'll report further tomorrow.
It wouldn't be in the Dropbox. It would've been your email.
In my email.
Yep.
But I have so many emails that I posted.
Join the club. Yes, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would just say that the house next door to the house that Mr. Caneely's building sold recently for more than $2 million, and it's substantially smaller than the house that Mr. Caneely is building, I think, in the space.
Which one is that? 22?
Yeah.
It's actually bigger.
All right, it's bigger, but it's somewhere, do you know what it's sold for?
Sorry, I'm gonna have to...
That's got anything to do with it.
Because that's not really pertinent to this, and because we are absolutely on end date time right now.
Absolutely.
I need to take the motion to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. I'll do this.
Thank you.